Welcome, everybody, to the December 19th Board of Commissioners meetings. Please silence your cell phones and pagers and other electronic communication devices. Agendas and speaker request forms are located at the back of the chambers. The commission now utilizes speaker request forms. If you'd like to speak on any item, please complete the speaker request form located at the bookshelf at the back of the chambers and return it to Commission Manager Holly Hennies located at the lower right side of the aisles. At this time, I would ask Commissioner Lassiter to do the moment of silence reflection and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Lassiter. At this time, is review and approval of the agenda?
Move to approve the agendas presented.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Roskinect. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next, that brings us to the consent agenda, and I will recognize Commission Manager Holly Hennies.
Good morning, Commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion invoked of the board, items are removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items: approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 5th, 2023; number six is to accept the recommendation for the appointment of Ms. Patty Bruner, Matthew Oden, and Heather Shambly to the 2024 Extension Advisory Board; number seven is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of November 2023; number eight is to approve the Human Services title changes from Medical Case Worker to Transitional Coordinator and Economic Coordinator, and to update the position listing on file; and finally, number nine is to authorize 1 Glock 17, serial number BCHF940, to be declared as surplus for the purpose of commendation.
Thank you, Holly. At this time, are there any members of the public who wish to have any items removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, at this time, is there any Commissioners who wish to have any items removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, move.
Moved by Lassiter.
Second.
Seconded by Roskinect. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next, that brings us up to regular agenda items. And first on the list is items from Sheriff Brian Mueller.
Good morning, Commission. Brian Mueller, Pennington County Sheriff, and I have before you today our authorization for our vehicle purchase that we do this time every year. The last couple of years, we've really struggled with replacing our unmarked vehicles and vans because there's really not been an availability. So this year, I'm requesting to purchase what the motions laid out there. Motion 1, 2, and 3 are for purchases, and the last motion is to declare four vehicle surplus. And I'd like to make one amendment to that motion if I could. Unit 106, the 2011 Dodge Caravan that's listed on there, was recently involved in an accident and is a total loss. So if I could, in that motion, separate that unit out for, to be declared surplus, to be disposed of through the insurance company for insurance proceeds.
Which one was that, Brian, again, please?
That is Unit 106, the 2011 Dodge Caravan.
Thank you.
Is there any questions for Sheriff Mueller? Do we have four motions that need to be done on this? Is there any public comment on this? Seeing none, I go to the board. Mr. Drews.
I've moved to approve the purchase of four vehicles off the state bid from Beck Motor Company, 1905 North Garfield, here.
Are you doing two motions at once on that? First motion should be to approve the purchase of two 2024 Chevrolet Malibu's for a total purchase price of $4,6100 from Beck Motors in Pierce, South Dakota, under state contract 17615.
Second.
Is that what you meant, Gary?
Well, why can't the Tahos be included in that motion?
They're under a different contract number, sir.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, that's what I meant.
That's what you meant. So moved by Drews and seconded by Hadcock.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Chair.
Ms. Hadcock.
Move to approve the purchase of two 2024 Chevy Tahoe PPV for a total purchase price of $103,524 from Beck Motors, Pierce, South Dakota, under state bid contract 231FB9231.
Moved by Hadcock.
Second.
Seconded by Lassiter. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number three.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskinect.
Move to approve the purchase of one 2024 Chrysler Pacifica van for a total purchase price of $43,833 from Liberty Mortars, Rapid City, South Dakota, under state bid contract 17614.
Thank you.
Moved by Roskinect, seconded by Hadcock. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Chair.
Ms. Hadcock.
Move to declare four vehicles of surplus property for purpose of trade as follows: Unit 106, 2011 Dodge Caravan.
You could have scratched that one.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was gonna say, you can scratch. Number two is the Unit 572, 2015 Chevy Tahoe asset 09952. Three is Unit 11, 2011 Chevy Tahoe asset 18414, Unit 317, 2013. Whoop, scratched that.
You still got the, you still want that 2013 Dodge Caravan?
I apologize, I thought you meant both, but, okay. And then Unit 317, 2013 Dodge Caravan asset 12907.
Moved by Hadcock.
So, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I would second that if we change that to declare three vehicles surplus property, since we scratched one.
All declare three vehicles?
Correct.
Then we need to do a separate motion for the fourth one.
Okay, that's for the three vehicles. Is it okay with this motion making?
Declare three vehicles as surplus property for the purpose of trade, and the other one we're calling what, Brian?
The other one will be for purposes of disposition through our insurance company.
Disposition.
We'll do a separate motion on that one.
Yep.
So we do have a motion and a second on the floor to declare these three vehicles surplus? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Chair.
Ms. Hadcock.
Unit 106, 2011 Dodge Caravan asset 46435 for purpose of disposition insurance.
Yeah, disposition through the insurance company for insurance proceeds.
Okay.
Second.
Moved by Hadcock, seconded by Drews. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Next, we come up, come to items from the auditor, and I'll recognize Cindy Muller.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor. The first item I have before you is in regards to the grant manager position. I did lay that out in the memo and let you know that Liz has resigned. And over the course of Liz being in my office, I found that Liz was not in the office very often at all. She spent most of her time working on, if you should say, law enforcement-type grants. And so it's kind of my recommendation that we move that position back into the sheriff's office, and then whoever that person would be would also be working with the state's attorney's office and human services on any of their grant needs. They would also be available to other departments if need be.
So they'd just be in, be in the same position just underneath the sheriff's, but they'd still, any grants that the county may need would still?
Yep.
Be able to?
And we would work with them on, you know, making sure that we get what we need from them for our annual statement of federal funds for the spending of the federal dollars.
Okay.
We'll handle that part of it still within our office.
Okay, because right now, you're handling about $2 million, right, in grants?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any questions for Cindy? Any public comment? Seeing none, I go back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I move to authorize the grant manager position to be moved back under the sheriff at this time, and the FTE and budget for 2024 will remain under the auditor until 2025.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Seconded by Lassiter. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item B.
The next item is in regards to some unspent 2023 budget that State's Attorney Laura Rettzel has within her budget that was intended to be used for a software purchase in 2023. That project isn't going to be done until 2024. So I would like to have the board put that in a signed reserve for that purpose for 2024.
Laura.
Good morning, Laura Rettzel, State's Attorney. We ran into a hiccup with the data upload required for our new software management program. We're looking now at a go-live date in 2024. I have considerably underspent in my budget. I'll be excited to turn back hundreds of thousands of dollars, but I have not allocated for that $330,000 needed to pay for my new case management software program. So I'm asking that you move that into my 2024 budget so that I can pay for it appropriately.
Thank you, Laura. Is there any questions from the commission?
Chair.
Ms. Hadcock.
So describe underspent. Is it because you haven't used all their FTEs, or is it because what? Why are you underspent?
Yeah, a lot of that is the fact that we have been, until very recently, considerably understaffed. I'm very excited to report that we are now full-staffed for the first time in seven years, and so I don't anticipate having that problem in the future, but it is mostly in salary.
So... I guess you're underspent. I'd like to know how much that underspent you meant was, because you said you're underspent by hundreds of thousands of dollars at this time, but I'm, and always have been, in approval of what you're doing with the computer software, Ms. Rettzel. I just don't understand the underspent, and if you're underspent, maybe at this time, bring that forward when you're doing like this memo. It would be nice to know how much you're underspent, because some of the things that you're asking for today might make a huge difference on that underspent, knowing that ahead of time.
Yes, I put in my memo that I think I'll have about $500,000 in unspent monies, and I do think that that's mostly due to unspent salary line. We also had that enormous Richard Hirth trial that did not go, and we anticipated spending about $100,000 in that trial and did not spend that money. So I anticipate giving back $200,000 to $300,000 in addition to this $330,000 that I'm asking that you move into 2024.
Thank you, Ms. Rettzel.
Thank you.
Mr. Drews.
Questions answered.
Questions answered. Any further questions for the auditor or Laura? A public comment? I'll go back to the commission for a motion.
Chair.
Mr. Drews.
Move to place $330,075 in an assigned to State's Attorney's software fund balance to be utilized in 2024 to cover the costs of the software project that was budgeted for 2023 but was not completed.
Thank you. Moved by Drews, seconded by Lassiter. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Laura.
Thank you.
Next, we come to, well, item C, Public hearing for Budget Supplement Resolution SB 23-002.
That's exactly what this is, is a resolution for a budget supplement. The debt service items on there are related to how we have to now account for those debt service transactions within our financial report. So that is what that section is about, the, look at my memo, the $4,500 for the bonds, that was some unanticipated expenditures, fees for services that were related to the refunding of those bonds. And then the unassigned fund balance to the general fund of $349,584 is for the increase in our property insurance that was not anticipated.
Okay. Is there any questions for Cindy?
Chair.
Ms. Hadcock.
So the general fund 2495, where did that come from? I mean, is it from reserves or unassigned or assigned?
Because of the way that we have to account for it, we have to move the expenditure that the department has already incurred underneath their budget. We have to account for that down in our debt service budget. So really, it's not coming from anywhere, it's just a shift in where that money is being charged at the end of the year.
So it's not changing the reserves, it's not changing anything, it's just a shift?
No.
Okay, I was gonna ask, is something else on here, and I wrote it down, let's see, oh. For the insurance, where does that come from, the '23 or '24 budget, the shortfall of three, it's 349584?
This is a 2023 budget supplement.
Okay.
For our insurance, and so that does come from the unassigned fund balance.
And how much do we have in there? I think I saw it earlier, but...
The unassigned fund balance?
Yes.
I don't have that calculated out for 2023 because we have not finished 2023 yet.
Finished 23, okay. That's a pretty big amount of $350,000 that was not accounted for at this time, and it's just, at the end, I guess I want to see, some people are turning back, Ms. Rettzel just said that she was turning back money. Are the other people using the fund for the FTEs, or can they use the fund for other stuff when they do have FTEs that they're not using at this time?
When we look at the ending balance at the end of the year for budgets.
Right.
We look at the bottom total to make sure that that budget is not overdrawn. We do not look at the budget by one item.
Where it comes from. Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskinect.
Move to approve Budget Supplement Resolution SB 23-002.
Motion was made.
Second.
Seconded by Drews. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Next, we come up to items from Highway Department number two, which is, and I'll recognize Superintendent Joe Miller.
Good morning, Commission. Merry Christmas. First up in front of you is a cooperative forest road agreement with the Black Hills National Forest. This is something that needs to be done every five years. It's been done for, forgot to look up the exact date, but a number of years dating back. These roads are forest service roads that the county maintains for the good of the public and the county. So some examples of these are Gillette Prairie, Reno Gulch, East Slate, Slate Prairie. Those are some examples of the roads that are on this agreement. West Deerfield would be another one. Most part, it's staying the same for 2023, some notable changes. Dead Men Creek Road, which is off, it was a forest service road that was put in place for, at one time, from my understanding, for a logging operation off of Sheridan Lake Road, close to that Victoria Lake Road turn there, went off to the south for a logging operation. The right of way is, staying in place, but the forest service is just taking full responsibility for that. Battle Axe Road and Gray Road, which are some smaller roads that there are no or very little numbers of houses on, and then White Horse Road is going back to the forest service also. And then in turn, the county is going to take West Deerfield. We feel that this is a fair trade and is going to better serve the public, because West Deerfield is a much more highly-traveled road than the other three combined. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Is there any questions from Joe from the commission? I have no public comment. I go back to the commission for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskinect.
Move to approve Cooperative Forest Road Agreement 24-RO11020300-003.
Second.
Moved by Roskinect, seconded by Drews. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item B.
Item B is the authorization to purchase one new side delivery broom. After doing some research, we did have a pickup room or a vacuum broom in our equipment purchase plan for 2024. After doing some research, we got a price and some lead times back in June of this, of 2023. The price is about $386,000 for a new one of those pickup brooms. So we chose to look over our brooms this year after we were done using them in the spring. We typically use them in the spring in Rapid Valley to pick up the sand and salt that we have put down over the course of the winter out in the Rapid Valley area. Each of the machines gets about 50 to 100 hours. We do have two of those vacuum pickup rooms, so they went through them, and we decided that we think we can make those last for another three or four years and put away some dollars towards the purchase of a new one of those. With that being said, there is a need in our Hill City Division for another side delivery broom. We currently have two, and they both are in the Rapid City area because of the hills and plains that we have in the Rapid City area. In the summer months, the thunderstorms often cause washes down onto our pavement roads, and there's a need in a Hill City Division for a full-time broom up there or one to be stored up there during the summer months. So that's where this purchase is coming from.
Is there any questions for Joe? The only one I have, Joe, is the maintenance on these, you guys have been keeping up on them pretty good by changing the pressures on them and maintaining them, so that's why they've been lasting for so long?
Yeah, from my understanding, the one broom, the engine's getting up there in hours. They both have dual-engine brooms, basically, so one runs the drivetrain and one runs the vacuum or the pickup brooms. And the, one of the engines in one of those brooms, I believe it's our Johnson machine, is getting a little weak, so we're just keeping an eye on it, changing fluids, doing all the regular maintenance to make it last, so.
Okay. Any further questions? If not, I go back to the commission for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
Move to authorize the Highway Department to purchase one new 2024 Superior Broome DT74J from RDO Equipment Company, Rapid City, in the amount of $85,754.36 from the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract number 111522-SBM.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Seconded by Lassiter. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Commission.
Next, that brings us up to item B, or, excuse me, items from Human Resources, and I'll recognize Director Carol Bancroft.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Bancroft, HR Director for Pennington County. I first want to wish you a very happy holiday season, and as we wrap up 2023 and prepare for 2024 with the resolutions I'm about to bring to you, I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you for your service this past year. That's not an easy job, and we greatly appreciate all that you do.
Thank you, Carol.
So the first resolution is the Drug-Free Workplace Act certification for a public entity, and this is our annual renewal of that resolution, so I'd request that our board chair would be able to sign the 2024 resolution.
Is there any questions for Carol? I do have one public comment on items A and B, so I'll go to Tina Malali.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the services that you bring in. Merry Christmas. I do have a question regarding, since this is an annual resolution that needs to be signed, and that the citizens of South Dakota had voted in the medical use of marijuana, even though that it is still federally illegal. I'm wondering what this resolution, I didn't find anything in there in regards to any of the employees having assigned medical use of marijuana. Is that going to be added to this, or are you going to, gee, I don't want to say discriminate, but are you, the individuals that may have medical issues, is that going to be addressed in this?
So the employee policy in the handbook, that it does talk about if it's anything that deals with safety, so for example, if somebody is driving a CDL license, et cetera, like with the Highway Department or with the sheriff's office, they're required to go through drug screening in order to make sure. And then the other piece of it is, is if somebody appears to be unable to perform their duties, or if there has been something that you can tell that they are under the influence, that they can be drug tested at that time.
So those are your terms?
Follow-up, please, sir? And so the question is, is that if they have a medical license to be able to use cannabis, what reaction are you going to have to that? Because under our state law, it's now legal to have a medical subscription to cannabis. But if their job duty is just inputting stuff, that can still affect how they input stuff, which would affect the taxpayers.
Right, so under state law, we do have the right as the employer to accommodate, don't, we do not have to accommodate the use of anything that would have them under the influence in the workplace, even though medical marijuana is approved, that we do not need to permit that in the workplace to have them under influence.
Thank you for your time, sir.
Is there any further questions for Carol? Seeing none, I go back to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
Move to approve the 2024 Resolution for the Drug-Free Workplace Act Certification.
Second. Moved by Drews, seconded by Roskinect. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. That brings us up to item B, Carol.
Yes, thank you. That, the elected officials' compensation levels for fiscal year 2024, that in March 21st of 2023, we set the minimum base annual salaries for Pennington County elected officials. The county auditor was $91,000. The county register of deeds is $91,000. The county sheriff, coroner is $135,000. The county state's attorney is $135,000, and the county treasurer is $91,000 as the base annual salary. So our current incumbent annual salaries for 2023 for each of those positions is our auditor is at $125,000. The register of deeds is at $91,042. The sheriff and coroner is at $150,000. The state's attorney is at $135,000, and the treasurer's at $125,000. So if the board does accept this recommendation and approve the 2024, that the resolution that was signed on March 21st, that our elected officials are eligible for the annual cost of living, which was approved for 2024, a 4%. So that would bring the annual salary that would be effective on December 24th of 2023 for the auditor at $130,000, the register of deeds at $94,683.68. The sheriff, coroner would be at $156,000. The state's attorney would be at $140,400, and the treasurer would be at $130,000. So if you were to approve this, the motions could read that I move to increase the 2024 annual salary levels for Pennington County elected officials by the annual cost of living cola of 4% to mirror the wage scale adjustment as listed. And also, I move to allow the board chairperson to apply their signature to the Pennington County Elected Officials Wage Policy Resolution for 2024. to the Pennington County elected officials' wage policy resolution for twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Carol. I do have another speaker request from Tina Maloney. I'll let her speak before I go to the board.
Thank you, Commissioners. I apologize for not announcing. I'm Tina Malali from Rapid Valley. I have a little concern about the increase in salaries. And I understand that, you know, the cost of living is an annual thing. But with the inflation that we're having to deal with, it's enormous. And the citizens that are actually going to be paying these salaries aren't getting a cost of living raise. And it's going to be even harder on them to accept this cost of living raise for elected officials. I, as a state representative, make eleven thousand dollars a year for the amount of work that I do. And it's not a part-time job, as they tell you. My point is, is that I don't know if this is the correct time to increase salaries when the inflation in our nation is taking us in a route that we'll never get out of if we don't stop spending. You know, and I understand that everyone that's elected and everyone that serves needs the same thing that everybody else does, food, water, housing. But the ones that are actually paying the bill, they're not getting a cost of living raise. So I'm just a little concerned that this might be something that is out of sync with what's actually happening in our world today. That's all my concern. I just think it's out of line right now.
Thank you, Tina.
Chair.
Ms. Hancock.
Did this go through the compensation committee at all?
No, it has not.
Okay. I thought we were going to run them through the, I guess my understanding was going to run the wage comparables and market analysis, and I haven't seen those on these either.
So the wage comparison and market analysis on the elected officials, that was completed back in January, February, and agreed to in March.
Okay. And it's not the same it is is on this paper, is what I'm saying. For wage comparables and market analysis, that's why I was wondering if it went through the compensation committee, because we are doing a new wage study. And a lot of this, I believe, is coming forward through the compensation committee. And at this time, I don't have that information that we had in twenty-three or or March twenty-first at this time to make a decision to do this based on wage comparables, comparables, market analysis, or in a decision from the compensation committee. Because I think there's a lot of department heads in there that probably have a voice on some of the elected officials. And I also think that some people got above and beyond the four percent already this year. And maybe we ought to think about that when we're doing, making these decisions right now. And like I said, that's going to depend on me, the wage comparables and the market analysis that we've been using or we're supposed to be using. But at this time, I don't have any of that. So today, I probably, not because I don't appreciate all these department heads, but I also would like to see at the same time, a market analysis and comparable and and how that works with other department heads before I agree with it. So.
So I'd just like to clarify that the wage study that the compensation committee, that my directive to work with the compensation committee was for Pennington County employees, that the elected officials would be separate. And then at a later point in time, that the department heads would be a separate wage study as well, which I'm working on. So the compensation committee has only been tasked with the rest of the Pennington County employees.
But you said you had the comparables from twenty-three for this year. So I guess I was wondering, you said, I thought you said that you had the comparables for this, but we don't have it in front of us today, right?
No, it was presented to the Commissioners back in the February, March timeframe for their decision-making with the resolution that they approved on March twenty-first.
I guess, and that's what I'm saying, and it's not the same as it is today. So I'd like to see that difference before I made that decision. And then we also can see that when I'm looking at some of them, some got three, some got fifteen, some got twenty. That's going to make my decision on what's going to happen next for those comparables from twenty-three. So I guess I didn't have that in front of me at this time.
Thank you. I will, I will, did you, Mr. Drews?
I'd move to increase the twenty twenty-four annual salary levels for Pennington County elected officials by the annual cost of living cola of four percent to mirror the wage scale adjustment as listed.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Seconded by Roskin.
Yes, the chair.
Mr. Drews.
I do believe that, you know, we approved this back in in March to move forward. We've worked hard the last couple, three years on trying to keep both employees and elected officials at an appropriate wage scale. And so I believe that this is appropriate at this time.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
You know, there's been a lot of changes in some of the stuff that we've been doing this last year, and it is kind of concerning with this. And we're talking about inflation. And, you know, government's response to inflation is to pay more so that employees can could afford the items that are out there. But the only way you can impact inflation and bring it down is people got to stop buying stuff. So if you keep giving people money, they're going to keep buying stuff at higher, higher rates. So if we just keep spending money and putting a burden on the on the taxpayer whose property has to go, you know, the the levy has to be adjusted to pull the amount that we're spending in our budgets each and every year, that is going to cause even further problems. And right now, without an overview of an entire wage compensation, because it is going to impact our our wages from employees and elected officials, is going to impact our budget for twenty twenty-five. I know we've already discussed it for twenty twenty-four, and it's already been passed. But I'm really concerned with what I'm seeing for what's going to happen for twenty twenty-five. If we keep raising it, there's going to continue to be that expectation. So we've got to push the pause button, in my opinion. I I I like all of our department heads, and I think they do deserve recognition and understanding that we appreciate the work that they do. However, I think funds are going to get a lot tighter here in the near future, and we and we need to kind of start reining that spending in it now. So my, I'll vote no on this.
Thank you. This is on the elected officials that we went through the first part of the year. And this has has been a discussion for probably every year. And the commissioner, when they had this discussion, they fall behind. As one just stated, you know, some elected officials never really get one. And we were trying to, this commissioner was being proactive by saying, we're going to take the the cost of living every year is going to be added to try and keep up. So it doesn't lag behind like it has in other areas. And so that was part of the discussion of of going with the call and not changing. We did the study, we found out where they needed to be, and then decided that we're going to go with the the coma every year to follow that, so they don't fall behind. So that's my recollection of this.
Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
Carol, when we're here next year going through this, it would probably help all five commissioners if we did have some market evidence so that we could support the four percent or whatever it is going to be for two thousand twenty-five. So just something to think about in the next year.
Will do.
Ms. Hancock.
I'm trying to find the paper, but I cannot find it at this time. Why I'm saying that is because if we're doing market comparables and we're using in twenty-three, we didn't start at our auditor, we started at what, ninety-four, went to one twenty-five. So we didn't do wage comparables on that. Register of deeds, we probably did. Sheriff, we did not. State's attorney, I think we did, and treasurer, we did not. So are we picking and choosing on wage comparables because it's not four percent, it's past four percent? Some people, we were supposed to give four percent this year, but we made exceptions. So that's why I said, I'm speaking, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Carol. That's why I'm saying we went above and beyond in some of these areas on exceptions. So we did not file, we didn't do it by comparables, we didn't do it by anything. We did it by exceptions. The exceptions weren't done by wage studies or market analysis. If that's what we're doing it, that's why I'm asking the question. If if that's how we're doing our studies, then let's do it that way. And I'm not against anybody that got a raise, because you guys do a wonderful job. Our department heads are amazing. But I'm not seeing that with the adjustments that I've seen this year. I keep seeing exceptions, and some of these people haven't got exceptions. So some got to three thousand and some got fifteen to twenty thousand. Those aren't comparables. Those are based on exceptions. And I haven't found in the Compensation three eighteen, exceptions, disparities, or or compression definitions for for what we're doing this year. So some of these, you can't go from one ninety-four to one thirty, from twenty-three to twenty-four, and feel like you're compressed or despaired. You can't go from one twenty-something to one fifty-six and not feel compressed or despaired. Now, maybe some of your department heads that are unelected, yes. We have two of these people that aren't even elected officials at this time, meaning we have appointed them. So Ms. Cindy, ask Ms. Cindy what happened to her. So when we, she went and ran for election, we had to take her back, right, Ms. Cindy, to ninety-one or eighty-five at the time? But now we're making exceptions for twenty twenty-four, and once you set them, they're there. Meaning if they're elected, that's what they get. So ask yourself, if you're not elected yet, I'm just saying the same thing. If you're not elected yet, how do you get different exceptions than we've had in the past? That's what I'm asking. You have people that aren't even elected. So when they get elected, how are you going to take them back like you did for Ms. Cindy? Because that was the rule, and that is the rule. If you're elected, that's what you get. And then what happens after you've been in here for a while, if I'm right, Ms. Cindy? Then we raised you up based on years of experience and other stuff like that. Now, I got that. But I'm seeing exceptions with that rule as well, because twenty twenty-four, once you set them, you're done. So that's another reason why I can't do it at this time, because I'm going to treat everybody like I did Ms. Cindy. And then when they come and they get elected, and we know Ms. Laura's been in here for a while, and she does a great job. Heck, she's worth a hundred and forty. Ms. Audra, I think she should be raised up. If we're raising everybody else up, the exception should be the same for Ms. Audra. Those are my thoughts. Just based on experience and being here and following the rules and regs and policy procedure, we should follow all the rules and regs for everybody the same. So, thank you.
So I respectfully would like to clarify a couple of things that you said, Commissioner Hancock. That it was in January that I was tasked by the Commissioners to evaluate as far as what was going on with our elected officials. A recommendation was brought to the Commissioners, and that was where the Commissioners made the determination as far as setting these wages. So that was something that it wasn't done just out of the blue. There was a wage analysis that was done at that point in time, and that information was presented to the Commissioners so that they could make that determination as far as what it would be.
So, Chair, I disagree with that, because the wage analysis was not the same as what we gave them on the papers. So.
Okay.
I respectfully disagree.
I I remember, as you said, we sat down, went through it. So I think this is really going nowhere, so we're going to go, come back to the commission. Is there a motion on the, from the commission?
You have a motion on the floor.
Oh, excuse me. So we have a motion on the floor for the four percent. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed.
No.
Motion carries with.
Mr. Chair, correct my vote. I was in the middle of thought and was reading, and I answered yes, and I actually was supposed to be a no.
So two noes from Hancock and Mr. Laster. So motion carries. There is a second motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd move to approve the twenty twenty-four elected officials' wage policy resolution.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Seconded by Roskin. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I opposed.
No.
Oh.
Motion carries with two noes, one from Laster and Commissioner Hancock. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, that brings us up to item number fourteen, and this is items from Public Defender's Office. And I'll recognize Director Eric Witcher.
Good morning. Happy holidays and Merry Christmas. The county has a wage policy that if a current employee recruits another employee, that there's a bonus for them. We missed one of those, and so that's why we're becoming before the commission. We had a a wife who referred their husband to work for us, and he's been with us now since January of twenty twenty-two. So we would ask that we be allowed this exception.
Chair.
Ms. Hancock.
Move to approve the payment of five hundred employee refer bonus to Christine Enzimer.
Second.
Thank you.
Moved by Commissioner Hancock, seconded by Mr. Lassiter. Any further, Mr. Drews?
Eric, only question I have is, it took two years to.
Yeah. So the reason.
It brought to your attention, even.
We had another spouse who referred another spouse. And so this is what brought it to our attention that we missed the prior spouse. So we're trying to correct that now.
Any further questions?
Chair.
Ms. Hancock.
Thank you, Mr. Witcher, for taking care of your employees. Sometimes we miss stuff, don't we?
Yeah, we do.
Thought you'd take care of them. Thank you, sir.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we come to items from Building Committee. And construction, I'll recognize Construction Project Manager Kevin Burton.
Hi. Good morning, Commissioners. Davis Purcell, Director of Buildings and Grounds. What I have before you is a recommendation from the Building Committee regarding discretionary spending for buildings and grounds at the First Interstate Bank location. The breakdown of our thought process, there are a level of items requiring material purchases and subcontractors work with discretionary, or excuse me, subcontractor work. And with discretionary spending, B and G would act as a general contractor, which would save considerable time and resources. So for example, if we were to hire a design team, our timeline would be pushed back at least six months, as well as a minimum of ten percent fee added on to anything we do. Keep in mind, a detailed record of the expenditures will be tracked and presented at the completion of the project. And I will stand for any questions.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
Just to, not necessarily a question of Davis, just a comment relative to discussion that we had in the Building Committee is that this, it looks like it would be more efficient in order to be able to go to this direction. There's a considerable amount of of work that can be done by the buildings and grounds or under the fifty thousand dollar cost by a general contractor. And so I think this is a a good move.
Is there any further questions? This is informational only.
Chair.
Mr. Drew, Ms. Hancock.
So do you spend fifty thousand at a time, up to three hundred thousand? Is that what you're saying? So you stay under the contracting.
If we have to go through that procurement process of getting bids, then we will. But there's, like we said, there's considerable amount of work that my staff can do in-house as well as sub, as well as subcontracting some of it out. We, I can't say for sure if we would stay under fifty thousand for each project or each renovation, whatever you want to call it. But we're gonna, we're gonna do our best to keep costs to a minimum.
So David, what is the rule on subcontracting before you have to bid it out legally?
Good question. I have it in my mind for what it is with the city. Kevin is here to help me with that. So.
Yeah. Kevin Burton, Construction Manager for the county. The procurement rules will follow all the state statute for procurement rules. Up to fifty thousand dollars, you can just ask for quotes, written quotes. Beyond that, you have to do a formal solicitation, which is a full-blown advertisement. Typically, if we're advertising for something that's a detailed construction, takes a lot of code issues, then we'll hire an architect to do that. There's some things we can do with a formal solicitation that you don't need an architect for, like a rough project, sometimes just a rough replacement. That's that's more a specialty-type contractor, and you're just replacing like for like. So we can solicit those above fifty thousand without bringing in an A and E firm.
And I remember that from Mike. That's why I asked you, David, and you're learning. So we're all doing that sometimes, so we have to figure that out. But I guess that's what I meant by the fifty thousand, if you were going to do it in pieces and parts of fifty thousand so you could get under, not having to bid. Sometimes we have to do that in order to save money, and I get it, just so it's done. We had initial budget of one point six two five. It'd be nice to see what you're doing with your fifty thousand, or it's somewhat of some line out. When you're doing a job, you already know you have a contractor of your own or or something in mind that says, okay, this is going to cost this much, I'm going to do this, I'm going to do this, I'm going to do this, and then the project is done. this, I'm going to do this, and then the project is done. Um, it'd be nice to see that when you come up next, just to see the cost savings you're going to have, um, and then where you're going to save it at. You have some of those areas, but you might save fifty thousand here and a hundred thousand here because Kevin's going to do this, and David's going to do this. Um, it's nice to show the general public, including us, uh, what's the bottom line. If I did any kind of job for myself, I'd like to see the same thing, and always have. We've been, done it with our motels or anything. And my husband's like, you're going to make me detail this? And I said, yes. So what it is, is just to make sure that, um, the one point six-two-five, if it's not going to cost that much, what is the bottom line?
Sure. Yeah, and we're going to be as transparent, uh, as we need to be throughout this process.
Yes.
And, uh, like I said, we will have a detailed record of, of everything that, that we use, uh, those renovation funds on, uh, for that building or those construction funds. Um, we do believe we will be under that one point six-two-five million. Um, I don't want to say how much, but then hopefully we can give some back for the jail for more infrastructure fixes and things like that.
And I appreciate that. And it's not transparency, um, always, it's, makes it transparent, I understand for me. But bottom line is, is, um, what are you doing with the money, uh, for different areas? What are you spending it on? Is it going to, towards, uh, B and G projects? Is it going towards something else that we've decided in building? Because it has changed so much in that building. It'd be nice to know basically what areas you're spending the money on and what is going to be in there by that time. You should know exactly where everything's going to go and, and how much it's going to cost.
Kevin Burton, Construction Manager. Uh, just to, to add on to that, um, we're still working with Public Defender's Office and the other occupants of the building to fully define the scope. The scope items that we have, that we know of right off the get-go, which is why we're asking for the three hundred thousand in discretionary spending, is secure access for everybody to be able to get in and out of the building, um, HVAC controls, so we can control the HVAC system within the building, and then some minor renovation material. Um, three hundred thousand that we're asking for in discretionary spending is a, uh, just a stepping stone of the one point six. And, um, as soon as we get that part done and we finish defining all of the rest of the scope, we'll bring forth a lot better projection of what those end costs will be.
And Kevin, I think you did put some of this on paper before, where you're talking about the locks and the different stuff for the different areas, and I think that's what you're talking about. And I thought you were changing into something else besides that. So, um, now I get it. I wasn't getting it out first until you started talking about what you're going to spend it exactly on. And that's why I said it's nice to just know that, because then I'd just say, okay, you guys already gave us that list. Do you remember for the, the bank that's already in there and some of the things that you had to have right away? That's what you're talking about?
Yep. Yeah. But it's mainly for the, us to be able to occupy one side of the building quickly.
Right.
And, um, then we're going to work on remodeling the other side of the building. We're trying to define, um, the Public Defender has been very good at working with us to control costs as well. Um, we've got very minor renovations on two of the three floors that they're occupying, and the third floor is, um, yet to be completely, you know, figured out. But, um, it's going to take less work than what we had originally anticipated.
And I appreciate that, because at first I'm like, okay, is this something different than what you already had brought up before? Even that paper would have been nice to see, because then you'd already laid it out. Basically, what you're, what you need the discretion, and why you need it now, and why you're bringing it up at this time. Because you had said it before, I just didn't know it was the same project. And I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you. This is informational. We'll be back on our agenda January second for final consideration. Is there any further questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross.
I think you'll see in PIR this year that there's going to be a push to increase that fifty thousand to seventy-five thousand or even a hundred thousand, because fifty thousand just isn't, uh, covering the cost of a lot of different items. I, and I think it was, uh, Commissioner Drews can correct me, but I think there, last year, they increased it from twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand. And so that might be a little bit difficult, because they just did that increase, but, uh, I think there's going to be push to, uh, increase that fifty thousand, not this year, possibly in two thousand twenty-five.
Thanks, Ron. Is there any further questions or comments? Thanks, Davis.
Thank you.
Next, that brings us to items number sixteen, is item from Compensation Committee, and I'll recognize Treasurer Ned Brand.
Good morning, Commissioners, and Merry Christmas to you all. Uh, before you is the second review for the request for consideration for change in vacation and sick leave benefit policies as recommended by the Compensation Committee. Um, what we're doing essentially is trying to, um, move sick leave accrual over to vacation accrual to make it, those hours a little bit more flexible for employees to use, and they're already benefited hours that are provided to the employees. But this gives them a little bit more flexibility to, again, as I said, use them. So, um, this is the second review for the request. Um, last commission meeting, there were, uh, there was a question from Commissioner Hancock regarding how this may affect the, um, our budget for twenty twenty-four. There's so many different variables for that. It was very tough to, you know, um, if somebody leaves, it's not only a, if somebody retires, it's some, if somebody terminates their employment with, um, the county, and how much of their accrued benefits that they use. There's so many different variables. But what we did do is compare twenty twenty-two numbers to what might happen in twenty twenty-three or four. So employees are already in each department budgeted for twenty-eighty hours, excuse me, two thousand eighty hours. They're getting paid for two thousand eighty hours, whether this is a regular time, sick leave, or vacation hours. That's how many hours are in a year. That's how many each department budgets for their employees. Employees are not paid out more than their accrued hours that they have not used and cannot get paid on more than the cap amount for their future, or excuse me, for their tenure. Sorry about that. The only cap that has changed is for the twenty-plus-year employee. We believe that this is a minimal effect on the budget for the following reasons. Pennington County has a hundred and twenty-eight employees terminate employment, um, that had payouts in twenty twenty-two. Of those hundred and twenty-eight, there were twelve employees that were twenty-plus employees. Of those twelve, only two were at the maximum cap amount of accrued hours that would have been affected with this new proposal. Um, based on how they used and banked their time, most likely would have had an additional twenty hours in their payout. One employee would have affected the budget by an additional five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and twenty cents, and the other by seven hundred and fifty-six hours, excuse me, hun, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars. Those, um, two people were both from two different departments, so it would have affected two different departments', um, budget in those amounts. The total effect on the budget for twenty twenty-two, had this policy been in place, would have been one thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty cents. With that, I'll stand for any additional questions.
Ms. Hancock.
Thank you for taking the time, Ned. It took you a little bit to show me what was going on. And then we had to put it in some kind of perspective from twenty-two or, or a year, and it brought it down for, because I, I didn't want to come up with, we were coming up with three or four or five hundred thousand, or, um, you also said that the departments already had and know mostly what their, uh, employees are doing at this time for retirement a lot of times. So they have already got that in their budget. So that makes sense, too. So thank you for taking the time. You had to call me three or four times, and we went back and forth just to figure out, um, on some of the stuff. So thank you for always calling me back and, and visiting with me on this issue, because I totally understand it and appreciate your time that you, uh, took out for having me understand it. Takes a little bit sometimes on this conversation, but once we get it, it's good. So, thank you, Ned.
Is there any further questions from the commission? If not, I'd go to the commission for, I have no speaker request form, so I'd go to the commission for a motion.
Chair.
Ms. Hancock.
Move to approve the revised vacation benefits policy four point one and the sick leave policy four point three, including the accrued rates as presented by Compensation Committee to be effective the first pay period in twenty twenty-four.
Moved by Commissioner Hancock. Seconded by Commissioner Drews. Any further discussion? Say none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioners, and Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Ned.
Next, this brings us to i, seventeen, item seventeen, items from Emergency Management.
Good morning, Commissioners. Alexa White, Deputy Director for Pennington County Emergency Management. I don't look like Dustin today. He's on vacation this week. So he asked that I come and discuss this with you guys. West River Electric is, wants to submit two BRIC grants, which that stands for Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities. And the, the way for them to do this is to only go through the county the way the FEMA grant is written. So we're just a pass-through. And so, um, based on what was presented in our memo with the, the two locations that they want to bury some power lines, um, six hundred thousand and some change, nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand and some change, it would just be a pass-through. We would not be spending any money on the county side.
For grant. Is there any questions for Alexa? I have no public comment. Commission want to make a motion.
Mr. Commissioner.
Mr. Drews.
Move to authorize Emergency Management to submit the two grant applications, BRIC twenty-three three-nine-five-dash-highway forty-four-dash-one in the amount of six hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, fifty-four cents, and BRIC twenty-three three-nine-six-dash-highway forty-four-dash-two in the amount of nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five dollars and fifty-three cents to FEMA on behalf of the W R E A, and to authorize the chair's signature on the twenty twenty-three BRIC authorization letter.
Moved by Drews. Seconded by La Croix. Any further discussion? Say none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Alexa. Next, this brings us up to item number eighteen, is approval of the vouchers.
Owe.
Moved by Hancock to approve two million eight hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars and two cents. Seconded by Drews. Any further discussion? Say none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next, this brings us up to items from the public, and I'll read, these require a speaker request form. An item from the member of the public is to, is the time to discuss or express concerns with the Board of Commissioners on policies and issues affecting county government and its function. Action will not be taken during this, this item or any issue brought forth that are not properly noticed. Speakers under this item will be recorded in the minutes by name and area of interest. I do have four public speaker request forms, and the first one I have is Robert Malmarts. Does it, did I pronounce that right?
Yes, sir. Um, I'm visually impaired. Do I go over here?
Okay. Yep, you got it. And then just recognize yourself, or for the, for the record, your name.
Um, my name is Robert Malmarts. I'm a resident of Rapid City. Um, I come here, um, on, for the purpose of concern on the press release by the mayor and sheriff on the reduction of homelessness. Um, first of all, uh, good day, Commissioners, um, happy holidays, and to those of you that celebrate it, Merry Christmas. Um, personally, I hope he comes back soon, because I'm tired of this. Um, I've been, um, very present in city council meetings since July of this year, um, in the issue of the limited resources available to our homeless population, which I am a member of. Um, that press release that was put out approximately two months ago, um, by the mayor and the sheriff, um, to those of us in this situation, that announcement was extremely terrifying, because we have no clarification on what that means. Um, I understand that the rumors fly through this town. Um, I've been a resident of this town on and off for half of my adult life. Um, my intention is not to be homeless. I've actually been a pretty respectable part of the community throughout the majority of my life. Um, I used to be a s, a state high school soccer referee. Um, I actually wired a couple of the fire, the ladder trucks that are in use in Box Elder, or here in Rapid City, and then also one of the trucks that, in Box Elder. Um, through unfortunate circumstances, poor decisions, I'm in the situation I'm in. Um, I've already approached the city on asking for assistance, and their resolution was to remove one of the resources that was vital to those of us in the homeless community. Um, we are still residents of Rapid City. We are still citizens. We're still human beings. Um, and again, I've, I've been in personal contact with many city officials. Uh, I've tried to reach out to county officials with no response. Um, I've even reached out to organizations that have touted helping people in my situation, and also no response. Um, I will say, hearing, um, the two commissioners that were opposed to the, the raises this year, I commend you on that. Your concern for just the political and economical climate we're in right now is amazing. So thank you for that. Um, I would also like to say, um, a huge personal thank you to, uh, one of your staff members at the Care Campus. Her name, um, I, I can't remember exactly the name of my counselor, um, but I can one hundred percent say with certainty that I would not be here if it was not for that lady and my sobriety. I am now two hundred and seventy-nine days sober from alcohol, and I plan on continuing that. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Um, that being said, um, I'm just here, um, professionally, respectfully. I've gone through the chain. I went to the city. They're sitting on their hands. They're not providing answers. So I'm going up the chain and asking the county, um, or I know you guys can't provide answers at the moment, and, and ladies. Um, but just to keep this in thought, and I have provided my contact information. Um, again, I'm just a concerned citizen, somebody in a very unfortunate situation, and I'm scared. So thank you for your time, and I will be back.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, say sir.
Mr. Ross.
Uh, if you've given somebody your contact information, this is Commissioner Ross Connect.
Yes, sir.
I would be giving you a call after the holidays, and I'd love to sit down and visit with you one-on-one.
Yes, sir. I'd be very happy to do so, um, as with any of you. Um, I personally, um, sorry to take up a little more time. Um, I am currently employed independently. I've had one article published here locally. I've been trying to get a couple more. Um, I'm actively doing, uh, a population study here. I have every intention of going to the city auditor, um, to get some data records, um, as far as our influx of out-of-state residents and the exodus of longtime Pennington County residents because of that. Um, I'm also, um, working on several books. Um, I've been present in, um, a couple interviews through KOTA and other media. Um, and again, I'm just a concerned citizen. I'm not trying to stir up any problems. I just, I would very much like answers. And again, thank you so much. Happy holidays and Merry Christmas.
So Robert, just for clarification, you're okay with me giving out your information? Okay.
Yes, sir.
So I'll, if they request that, I'll give it to them.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Next, I have Ray. Ray, I'm not even going to try. That's longer than my last name.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Ray Lautenschlager, Pennington County voter and taxpayer. Many of us had no idea that the Central State Fair had been turned into a gun-free zone until the metal detectors were being used to turn people away. The reason given was that the contract between Pennington County and Central State Fair gives them the right to enforce this gun ban, because the fairgrounds, they said, are private property during the fair. Actually, nothing could be farther from the truth. State laws clearly forbid the regulation of firearms by any county or local government, which includes elected officials, bureaucrats, employees, or other agents. The laws also clearly spell out the responsibilities of the county commission in overseeing the publicly-owned fairgrounds and the operation publicly owned fairgrounds and the operation of the fair and other activities by the nonprofit operating corporation, which in this case is Central States Fair Incorporated, which operates the fairground on behalf of the Pennington County Commission and is therefore acting as an agent of the county government. This is a copy of the operating agreement between Pennington County and Central States Fair, which requires them to obey all state and local laws. It further requires them to recognize that the fairgrounds are public property and are ultimately under the jurisdiction of Pennington County. It also provides that if this agreement is violated, the county commission will give notice that unless the violation is corrected within ninety days, the agreement will not be renewed. It's rumored that some of the people involved are working with county attorneys to find a way to circumvent the intent of the law, which forbids the regulation of firearms by agents of the county government. And that one of their arguments is, well, this is only a policy, not an ordinance. But if this policy is enforceable, as if it has the force of law, then the effect is the same no matter what you call it. We respectfully submit that your constituents will not stand for this continuing violation of the law and this infringement of their constitutional rights. This issue is not going away until the commission puts Central States Fair on notice that their contract will not be renewed unless they cease and desist from this unlawful regulation of firearms. To give you some idea of how your voters feel about this issue, we collected over one hundred and fifty petitions by just a handful of volunteers in few hours' time. In closing, we have every confidence that you, our elected commissioners, will represent your constituents and work to protect our rights. And for that, we thank you in advance.
Thank you. Patrick Bowman.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Patrick Bowman and I'm a resident of Custer County and I appreciate the opportunities to speak today. As I said at your last commissioners meeting, I'm an enhanced concealed carry firearms holder and I'm also strongly support the commissioners removing the metal detectors from the fairgrounds. I do strongly applaud you guys again for being a second amendment sanctuary county and I feel that's an important step that you've made in the past. Since I spoke last time, I've played a very small part in circulating the petition that was mentioned earlier. And within less than an hour, on three different occasions, totaling an hour or less, I approached one person with the possibility of signing the petition. They were so energetic that pretty soon they would yell at somebody across the room or across the parking lot and say, hey, come over and look at this. And I would usually have a line standing there to sign that petition. And so I know there is a, a strong support for the Pennington County Commissioners to rethink, relook at these metal detectors in the fairgrounds. And I know that you're not hanging out, hanging out on a limb by yourselves, I'll guarantee you. And that was just a small sampling of people in Custer County on a very small amount, amount of time. Again, I request that you look at this. I know you're gathering information as fast as you can, but to expedite that process and time is of the essence. I know there's a, a lot of people out there excited to see this thing turned around and hopefully you can provide a little insight on what agenda you might have or what schedule or timeline you might have on making a decision on that.
Thank you, Patrick, and thanks for acknowledging that we are working on it.
Yeah.
And it's still in the works, but thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay.
Next, Tina Malali.
Good morning again, commissioners. Tina Malali from Rapid Valley. I understand that you are working on it and I, my understanding is the work that you're doing on the second amendment is that you're considering allowing your employees to be able to carry while at work. I know as a state representative, we had to get capital to carry in order to carry inside the Capitol building. My question is, is if you're willing to consider your employees getting the opportunity to carry their weapon while on duty, but are not going after the Central States Fair Board for impeding on my rights as a citizen to carry in a constitutional carry state and the second amendment sanctuary county. I would like to state that this petition I have in front of me, I will, I have copies for you. We've collected almost two hundred signatures in just a few hours. And this commission, this petition states, whereas South Dakota law prohibits regulation of firearms by any county or local government, and whereas any official employee or agent of county government who prohibits or restricts in any way contrary to state law, the possession of firearms is acting unlawfully. And whereas the Central States Fair Incorporated, while acting as an agent of the Pennington County by its operation of the fair on behalf of the Pennington County Commissioners, has posted on its website that no firearms are allowed and has set up metal detectors at the fair to enforce this gun ban. And whereas this action by the Central States Fair Incorporated is a direct violation of state law, seven eighteen A thirty-six, and the operating agreement with the Pennington County Commissioner as well as Article Six, Section twenty-four of the South Dakota Constitution and the Second Amendment of the United States of America. And whereas the Pennington County Commission has failed in its duties to ensure that Central States Fair Incorporated operates the fair in compliance with state law as the operating agreement requires. Now therefore, the undersigned citizens and taxpayers of Pennington County demand that the Pennington County Commission take immediate action to compel the Central States Fair Incorporated to cease and desist from this unlawful interference with the right of the people to keep and bear arms in self-defense. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tina.
Thank you, Tina.
That concludes our public comment period. Next on our agenda is executive session per CDL, CDCL one dash twenty-five dash two dash one for personnel issues.
Move to go on the executive session.
Second.
Any discussion?
Chair, for the wage exception request, I will not be going into executive session at this time. I know when we had the wage exception on one of our department heads and employees, we said, and it was stated publicly by our HR, in executive session and publicly out front, that there would be no more wage exceptions until the wage study was done. So at this time, I'm going to have to agree with the HR department. And I also believe on the exceptions that we've done before, I think our wage study and compression and disparity is, is coming from some of the, the exceptions that we've made. I did look up the word exception, a person or thing that is excluded from a general statement or does not follow a rule. And I'm finding that's what's happening on exceptions. So at this time, until the wage study is complete, I will, and it has nothing to do with this department, it has to do with the wage study.
Duly noted. We do have, Ms. Hancock will excuse herself for the wage exception request, but will participate in the annual department heady round.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. She can call me when you do.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Let me look for a motion to come out of executive session. Moved by Drews, seconded by Lester. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We do have a couple of items that were in executive session. Does anybody want to make those motions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
Move to place Alexa Muller at DBMC forty-four, step twelve, three thousand two hundred and seventy-eight, forty, biweekly. And Brandy Rehead at DBMC forty-four, step fourteen, three thousand three hundred and sixty dollars and eighty cents biweekly. And Andrea Robenberg at DBMC forty-four, step fourteen, three thousand three hundred and sixty and eighty biweekly, each to be effective November twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three.
Moved by Roskinect.
Second.
Seconded by Drews.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lester.
I just wanted on record, I mean, I've made it clear that I've been against some of these pay raises, the variances, whatever the term were, exceptions. In this particular case, I think there was substantial information that was given to us to change my particular vote on the, on these individuals. Some of the ones that we've done in public had certain circumstances that should have been done administratively. And I think these have some very unique situations that we're correcting something that should be corrected, even though I've been against some of them in the past.
Chair.
Ms. Hancock.
For me, it's not that. It's the wage exception request at this point, until we have the wage study done, it has nothing to do with these three individuals. I think they are outstanding people. It's just the wage exceptions that was stated at the last meeting in public and in executive session. So again, it's not about the three individuals, it's just about the wage exception requests.
Thank you. We do have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
One no from Ms. Hancock. That brings us to items from planning and zoning. Again, I'll recognize if you have an item, the commission now utilizes speaker request forms. If you'd like to speak on any item, please complete a speaker request form located in the bookshelf at the back of the chambers and return it to Commission Manager Holly Hayes, who can get the lower right end of the dockers. I'll recognize Brittany.
Good morning, commissioners. Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on uncontroversial and routine planning and zoning items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following items. Item A is Minor Plan MPL twenty-three, twenty-five for Richard and Christine Van Ness and the Planning Commission recommended approval with four conditions. Item B is Preliminary Plan PPL twenty-three, twenty-six for Free Range Rentals LLC and the Planning Commission recommended approval with four conditions. Item C is Planning Development Review PUR zero-five, zero-nine for Richard Sturkle and the Planning Commission recommended approval with thirteen conditions. Item D is Major Plan Unit Development Overlay Amendment Review PU nineteen oh-nine for Donna Hartshorn and the Planning Commission recommended to continue Major Plan Unit Development Overlay Amendment Review to the February sixth, twenty-twenty-four Board of Commissioners meeting in order for the applicant to work with the city of Rapid City to obtain approved operating permits for the existing onsite wastewater treatment systems. And item E is Major Plan Unit Development Amendment Review PUR twenty-two, dash zero-two for Erin Olson and the Planning Commission recommended approval with twenty-five conditions.
Thank you, Brittany. At this time, is there any members from the public who wish to remove any items from the planning consent agenda? Seeing none. At this time, is there any commissioners who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
Item D, Brittany. Item D, could you expand on the?
Hold on, you want that removed?
Oh, yes. Excuse me.
B, okay.
Was that D as in delta?
B.
D as in delta.
Well, D, okay.
D, dog.
I, this is why I was trying to clarify because I heard one and then I heard another and I'm like, wait a minute, which one is it?
D?
D, yes.
D, okay. So if we got item D pulled, is there a motion for A, B, C, and E?
It's a vote.
Moved by Hancock, seconded by Drews. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item D.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Could you expand on the work with the city of Rapid City to obtain approved operating permits for the existing onsite water treatment? So this is right across from Reptile Gardens, right?
Yes.
And so what is the existing onsite?
So they, get this up here. Kelsey Roche, Planning Department, they, one of their conditions is that they, let's see, what condition is it here? Remind myself which number. Okay, number eighteen, or that's prior to, hang on. So basically, I, when I was looking through and reviewing this, I noticed that they don't have any existing operating permits, which the city doesn't call it an operating permit, but they, they do the every six-year permitting like we used to. They are not current on those right now. I've, I sent a message to the city asking what was going on with that. She said that she had sent letters. There was a couple repairs that needed to be done, but they had not been up to date yet. So when I did do my site visit, I let Mrs. Hartshorn know that those needed to be done. There's a couple of the things that they need to do too. In addition to getting those fixed and, and permitted through the city, they are within the city's one-mile jurisdiction, just barely. It kind of swoops down over their property. But they, they, they do allow fire. If they have events and stuff, they do allow the fire, fire pit use. And I, we do not have a copy of their permit with the South Dakota Wildland Fire Division. So we need a copy of that. We also need, the addresses need to be posted, which they were not when I was there as well. There's, I think, three addresses that need to be posted out on the road and they need to put on the specific buildings. And then there is a pumpkin patch sign that does not have a sign permit that they've had for a few years that, so just a few little things that just need to be.
So this isn't the property with the, the little tiny homes?
Um, no, this is not that property.
One adjacent to the north?
Yes, yes. That's, that's, that property is right here.
How far south does the three-mile limit extend?
The one-mile pump, the septic?
Right.
That, it goes kind of through, it goes around Reptile Gardens. It clips down through this mobile home trailer or RV park and hits Hartshorn's.
So this is all within the one mile, but relative to the three mile, how far south do we go?
The three-mile plating jurisdiction? Oh, it goes two miles.
Right, just for?
Yeah.
Normal zoning?
Yes. Yeah, that one's, this is just on the very edge of the one mile, so.
Well, that answered my question.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, this is, this item is coming with a recommendation from the Planning Commission to continue till the February sixth, twenty-twenty-four board meeting.
That'll be my motion.
Moved by Roskinect.
Second.
Seconded by Drews. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, that brings us up to item twenty-two. These are items from chair or commission members. It's a time for individual members to bring forth ideas or concerns to the full board. Official action will not be taken on any items brought forth at this time. Direction may be given to bring back items back before the board in future consideration. Is there any items from the commission on this?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
These are just, not really committees, just other items.
I would do that underneath your reports.
I might report that I donated blood on the sixth.
Can't hear you.
Attended Black Hills Association of County Officials on the eighth. Met with the highway department, department and a private landowner, working on a parcel of land for the highway department. on the eleventh. On the thirteenth and fourteenth, attended the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners and peer. And on the eighteenth, which was yesterday, I met with Greg Litten with Black Hills Area Community Foundation relative to the housing shortage in western South Dakota.
And so that, that's it for your total reports under committees and?
The only committee would probably be the building committee.
You want to report in the building committee?
I'm gonna defer that. The commissioner agrees.
Okay. With that, I will, under meetings and community reports, I'll go to Ms. Hancock.
I went to the fire service Christmas party. Um, we had a wonderful time. We gave prizes and, and finished up our BOPs. We had a wonderful time that day. Um, we also went to LNI. I was invited to the uh seven tribes that had a meeting. Um, been going to some of those meetings with um the tribal members from Wyoming, uh South Dakota, North Dakota, and Montana. That's been pretty exciting the last uh three or four times that I've been. Um, they just decide usually during the LNI or the powwows that they'd have their meeting. So I appreciate all, everything that they've uh had me understand. We talked more, it sounds like more on the BIA and just some of the stuff with the police departments and um trying to get people qualified and keep people qualified on the reservations. It was pretty huge um for what they could do, but they have to go to the Department of Interior and some other areas where a friend of mine is the lawyer for them, so um yes, that was pretty, pretty awesome. LNI was pretty awesome, all the teams. I met some of the players um from Lakota Tech. They were very kind, um very good players, by the way. Um, what else did I do? I went to the JSE yesterday, Christmas party, and they did have some training as well with ICAC and on um graffiti. And then they had a Christmas party, which I helped out and then um gave some prizes and stuff for it. So they had, it was a lot, it was a lot of fun, and we had one of the judges, and I can't remember her name. I know it starts with a W, but she used to be in the state's attorney's office. Uh, very kindly, she said a few words and they had me say a few words, and so it was a really nice Christmas party, so. Been to go into a lot of department-led Christmas parties and giving surprises and stuff for those, so. Appreciate everybody who's invited me, and uh Merry Christmas to everybody.
Mr. Laster.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chair, um weed and pest board. Actually, I'll start with Planning Commission. It was pretty, pretty quick meeting, nothing major to report on that one. Um, weed and pest board, just a couple of things to point out. Um, the shaded fuel break on Rochford Road and stuff, uh basically got the money and they're starting to clear trees on that one. Uh, they're working on their LiDAR project, and um they have received their weed and pest grant app, or they've done their weed and pest grant applications. And then the, probably the biggest thing is District Two Weed and Pest Board opening, which is basically Highway seventy-nine to the Cheyenne River. So putting that out to the public, letting them know that there is an opening for that particular um position. I believe that is uh Martin DeSanto, because he's moved down to that area. It's gonna be an open one at the end of his term, so that's coming up.
Thank you, Mr. Laster. Mr. Drews.
Okay, I'm gonna take them in the order that they're listed. So um December five, six, and eight, there were uh Elevate uh opportunities to attend. So they had their annual meeting. It was a short meeting, they only had the election of one new board member. And then uh following that was the Elevate Mixer, which is the largest crowd I've ever experienced. It was nice to visit with some new business people in the area. Uh, we also participated in the Elevate Luncheon that uh Elevate's invitation on the eighth, providing a state of the county. Mayor Solomon gave a state of the city. Both contained budget, considerable, considerable budget information. On uh twelve twelve, Building Committee uh met. Uh, jail infrastructure and third housing unit, uh the BKV proposal was approved. Uh, virtual kickoff meeting was held on December eleventh. Startup schematic design discussion with jail, um personnel and BKV. Uh, proposed dates of bidding is, is December of twenty twenty-four. On uh the nine-hundred concourse, uh design development state, phase. A few minor interior wall location changes are being given to TSP. Meetings are being held with the departments to gather information regarding locations for TV monitors, panning buttons, special electrical needs, AV equipment locations, card access doors, et cetera. TSP will present to the next uh Building Committee meeting on January ninth an update on their design work to date, and then again at the, our meeting on the January sixteenth. Uh, First Interstate, JCI Johnson Controls, Inc. Is in the process of putting together a quote for proposed security work to make the facility secure, match systems installed in our other facilities. Also, other work is in the process of being quoted. Climate control storefront door system installed in the lobby for separate B and G and Public Defender Office entrances. Uh, leaseback remodel work in progress, scope being determined and cost estimates for capital project fund discretionary spending discussion. Uh, Kevin would like for the B, uh for the Building Committee to approve, uh, uh, to approve allowing approximately three hundred thousand dollars, and you heard this today, being released for remodeling expenses for the First Interstate Bank remodeling. Some quotes are being gathered. Contractors will need to start work soon, be given the go-ahead. There may be needs for small contractor projects for the jail projects, soil borings testings, and some borings also done at concourse. Remodel costs for the First Interstate Bank, and you heard part of this today, were originally estimated at one point six, six-two-five million. Uh, remodeling costs are, they're trying to hold those uh in a range of about six hundred thousand, which would trim off about a million dollars from that original estimate, which would be great. Um, Kevin would like to see three hundred thousand dollars set aside to be able to spend to start with. Uh, invoices will be gathered and submitted to the um, to our board uh once received. Uh, Sheriff Mueller uh suggested that uh the county may want to secure most of the parking structure, uh disassemble the existing share of parking enclosure and move elsewhere in the campus. Uh, details uh to be further discussed. The city will need to be notified of any change to the parking and the parking structure, since they participated financially in that. The uh courthouse tunnel, uh they noticed some further degradation in that, and so they received a quote from R RCS uh to do some shoring uh for a short section of the wall. Uh, they did, they performed that work last week. Uh, that grant uh to do the, all the work on that will be reapplied for on April one of, of twenty-four. Uh, Hill City uh Highway Building, uh discussion was that no budget dollars have been set aside for this. Uh, Joe has mentioned that um he had some funding to help with, but uh funding has evolved a lot since two thousand twenty-one, when those discussions uh took place. Uh, the sheriff also has suggested um that if there's other uh county offices that need some cold um storage space, that there's some available next to a building that they uh, they use for their shop. And uh so he's looking if others want to share a cost in that cold storage area. And then uh he brought up the substation at Apple Valley. Uh, whether we need a substation in Apple Valley at nine-hundred concourse, just exactly uh where that's gonna move to. That was part of the uh Skull Tiff, the uh, the uh substation that was talked about. We haven't heard anything further on that for a while. I understand there's maybe still some court activity taking place on that.
Mr. Chair, can I have a, can I ask a question about that? Does that change the structure of the Tiff if that comes out of it?
We don't really know how, what the impact would be. That's why the discussion needs to be held as to whether or not. I, I don't know if the sheriff is overly enthused about having two substations.
Right.
And so.
I don't think we would want two of them that close.
I think he would like to uh, you know, try to figure out where that substation needs to be, should be, and uh would it have an impact on that Tiff?
Okay.
Those are answers that we don't know at this point in time.
Thank you.
Compensation Committee, um, you heard uh some of that explanation today that uh was discussed there, but the position scoring matrix update, uh Carol shared that the subcommittee has done some position testing with the tool, and now would like to introduce it to the compensation committee. To start, you'll be, you'll input the rating on the scoring factors, which will populate your numbers over your scoring matrix and calculate your total weighted score. When enter, when entering the rating, it was decided to enter whole numbers only until all positions have been gone through. Brian Mueller uh pointed out that it should be very clear where a position should fall when you think about the position and not the employee in that position. On the scoring matrix, there are certain factors that are weighted more heavily than others, which helps to differentiate between positions. Each department is to do their own scoring for their positions, and HR will provide help if needed. HR is currently in the process of finalizing position descriptions, and once done, the scoring matrix can be used. The goal will be to have all departments turn in their scoring matrix for each position to HR by January seventeenth, or sooner if done earlier. Subcommittee will then review the positions to make sure they are scored correctly. Consensus was to go through the process of scoring and market analysis, and then present a comprehensive and detailed review to the Board of Commissioners at their second meeting in February. Uh, Holly recommended that when presenting it to the commissioners, to split it in two pieces. The foundation that's being set for positions and new employees, and how it will be applied to current employees. On December twelfth and thirteenth, uh, the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners met. Uh, we reviewed numerous pieces of proposed legislation for twenty twenty-four. Uh, Representative Trish Aladner is proposing to revert back to the twenty-twenty assessment levels and cap the increase. It was determined that it will not work as presented and will not be supported by the association. The proposal to make some changes within statewide emergency management was determined to have conflicts within their own organization, and therefore will not be supported. One of the Senate leaders, Casey Crabtree of Madison, asked the board to think of areas where counties may be able to provide suggestions on further economic development, and in return, the legislature can look at county incentives, incentives for an offset. We also had a joint meeting with the South Dakota Municipal League Board of Directors. The idea is to further the idea of working together for the betterment of both organizations, cities and counties. On December fourteenth, uh, the MPO met. Commissioner Larry Larson was re-elected chairman. Commissioner LaCroix was re-elected vice chair, and we approved. And if interested, I have the full list of obligated projects for twenty twenty-three, and the list of approved twenty-four through twenty-seven improvement projects. In addition, Area Engineer Mike Carlson gave an update on the reconstruction of three eighty-five over the next couple of years from Sheraton Lake to the Lawrence County line. The road will need to be closed for extended periods of time during the construction. Actual dates and specific time periods are being worked out. That concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Gary. Sounds like you had a busy month. And thank you for covering a lot of the stuff. So on mine, you did, you covered Elevate. Uh, the Elevate Mixer, like you said, was very busy. Uh, committee meetings, air quality board, was, we actually met in person this time, and it's been probably two or three years. Our new member from Pangton County was there and introduced, and, and she got uh an update of what's happening with air quality. As you know, their quality director had moved to another position, and the city's working right now with temporarily with some people that are doing the board, but uh it's still moving forward. There is no real major concerns on the air quality alerts. Uh, they continue to have some problems out in Blackhawk with equipment, and they've come up with a plan to change batteries or circuits every, on a regular basis instead of all of a sudden when they get a bad reading, when they know there's no smoke or nothing like that, of checking them. So that's what they're gonna do. Um, also, I attended uh the Lakota National Invitational Red Carpet Welcome, which was very well received, a lot of people there. And also did the LNI hand games. I didn't participate this year, but uh Mr. Drews and Mr. Roskinect, and who are the other two members?
Uh, we had um Heather from Care Campus and um Lisa.
Lisa.
Lisa Grun.
Yeah. Were, was your, was your team, and you guys took second place out of seven ga, eight games that you played?
Nine games I played, won seven.
Won seven. So that was pretty outstanding for them guys. They were presented with uh, uh trophy and an arrow for the participation. I believe there was twelve groups that participated this year, so it was very well received and gone through. So we appreciate you guys stepping up and, and playing part of that, that part. Also, attended the Black Hills Association of County Commissioners District Meeting in Buffalo, or?
Camp Crook.
Camp Crook, which was quite the hall. I about lost my Tahoe cover going up there. It was so windy that day. But we attended that also. Uh, that was a good meeting. Also attended the, the Elevate Critical Issue Luncheon with the state of the city and county, and I want to thank Gary for his presentation on the county's part. It was the most informative one, and I think a lot of people in that group uh really, they didn't know anything about the county now they do. And so I think that was very well received, and I appreciate you uh doing that. Um, with that, I'll close out.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
You know, I forgot to mention that I did attend the weed and pests with Traver, or Travis, and then uh, yeah, I want to thank Gary again for the wonderful job he did at the Elevate Critical Needs Luncheon that represented the county very well. And at the Building Committee, I requested that Kevin provide me with some numbers relative to the Great Western Bank Building. Once that is acquired, I wanted to know what kind of income we're gonna generate and what kind of uh expenses we're gonna eliminate. So uh, the monthly rent from First Interstate Bank would be twelve thou, or the annual rent would be twelve thousand seven ninety-four. And the monthly rent, uh, excuse me, the annual rent for Verizon, which we are going to be negotiating, because the end of their lease term is uh coming up. So this could be a higher rent, I'm assuming it is, but the annual rent right now is seventeen thousand nine oh four. And the expenses that we won't have once the public defenders move into that office, uh, enter the Great Western Bank Building will be, we're gonna save nineteen thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars annually. So the annual, the effective annual income generated from the Great Western Bank property will be just a little bit over fifty thousand for the first year of operation.
You have those numbers. It's nice for everybody on the dais to know that. If you're bringing that forward, I appreciate it.
Okay, that ends our reports. Anything else? Next, that brings us to executive session per SDCL one twenty-five-two. Personnel issue, personnel per SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two, one.
Move.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Roskinect. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Am I opposed?
No.
One no for executive session from Ms. Hancock. Look for a motion to come out of executive session.
Move.
Moved by Drews.
Seconded.
Seconded by Roskinect. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Am I opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I'm gonna read a motion. Moved to enter into meeting record, uh, public recommend of Commissioner Deb Hancock. The commission office received two formal written employee complaints claiming that Commissioner Deb Hancock violated provisions of Pangton County Code of Conduct. The employees and Commissioner Hancock were given the opportunity to address the complaints with the commission in executive session. After considering the individual written and oral statements of both employees and Commissioner Hancock, the commission finds and concludes that the commission- Commissioner Hagcock, the Commission finds and concludes that Commissioner Hagcock violated provisions of Section Three Members, Member Conduct with County Employees and provision of Section Four Conduct to public meetings of the Pangton County Code of Conduct by engaging in a course of conduct of poor behavior involving disrespectful, disparaging, and insulting comments, including unprofessional and unethical public criticism, all which amount to unacceptable behavior on the part of County Commissioner that failed to treat the employees as professional with the dignity and respect that they deserve. That is the motion.
You're making it?
Yep.
Second.
Chairman.
Motion made by LaCroix, seconded by Drews. Ms. Hagcock.
Yep, I have, um, something to say. American Constitution as framed by the Constitutional Convention chaired by the President George Washington, Thomas Jefferson, James Madison, many of those who signed the Declaration of Independence, participating in the Constitution framers based the American Republic on we the people. As elected officials, we are charged with the sacred trust to do the people's business openly, fairly, and honestly. Open meetings and sunshine lives are essential to our engagement with people. Respect for the public means respect for the people and the views expressed by the people. These principles embodied in the Code, County Code of Conduct, which rejects us all to listen to the public with respect and an open mind and a willingness to hear, to ask from the public's free and open viewpoints to a single commissioner violates our principles and cannot be basis of a complaint against a commissioner. After all, as elected officials, we embrace the sacred trust to serve the people. Please reference the Code of Conduct for proper way to receive considered public comments. The procedure adopted by the Chairman, which allows the Commission to have representation, but a commissioner to be denied representation violates my right to legal counsel. Due process mandates that this restricted proceeding cannot form the basis of adverse action against me. Public officials should be expected and welcome public involvement when discussing county government operations such as county administrator, facilities, or budgetary expenditures. Again, before approval of such matters, we need open meetings. We must provide sunshine to all the constituents. When we all, when we all as government officials embrace the principles of democracy with respect for the people, we can get along. That's the true meaning of Code of Conduct. On one hand, I am being accused of monopolizing employees' time, and then on the other hand, giving them the silent treatment. My communication efforts come down to trust and sometimes lack thereof. I'm apologetic for what appears to be communication breakdowns. Sometimes I talk too loudly in my eagerness to do the people's business, business. In the future, I should try always to speak in an even tone as we should all try to do.
Thank you, Deb. Mr. Laster?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'm just going to give my opinion on, um, how I'm gonna vote. I, I'm gonna be voting against this particular, uh, motion. Uh, I don't, I think, I don't think it addresses the overall arching issues that we have going on. I think it's more than what is needed in this particular case. And so I believe that, um, I made my points clear of what should happen, and I think there still should be more that happens to address some of the concerns for all individuals in the county and from the public's perspective.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you, Mr. Laster. At this time, I'll do, go to a roll called, no, is there any more just comments? Say none, go to a roll called...
Drews?
Aye.
Hagcock?
No.
Laster?
Nope.
Roskinect?
Aye.
LaCroix?
Aye. Motion carries. Look for motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Move the Laster, seconded by Drews to adjourn. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.